All right, well, you all ready?
Yeah.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, the earth, sea and desert.
And before we start, just wanted to let everybody know that Superintendent Casey won't be joining us tonight. She has some family issues, so my prayers go out to her and her family. With that, first up is approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
I second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. First up is Prosser School District Administrative Office Winter Break Hours presented by Deanna.
So for our contract, as you know, we have offices open until noon. People are working past that point, but if anyone needs to come in and do business, all of our days starting Monday after break starts up until we come back. I think it's the third is the last working day of Christmas break. So the office is open from eight to noon. If anybody needs to come in and do any business, otherwise we'll see you when we get back from break.
Sounds good. Thank you. Is there anybody signed up? Ashley, is there anybody online? All right, we'll keep moving on. Next up is student rep reports. Kami, you're up first.
Okay, boys and girls basketball play at home on Friday against Ellensburg. Boys swim travels to Pullman on Friday and boys and girls wrestling at East Valley tomorrow.
Good, I have a question, and I'm not sure, but maybe you would know, did we have a basketball player break a game record fighting scoring last week or this week? Did we? Was that the record or tie? Good for her. Thank you. Alexander?
Um, today after school, me and the lunch service people at the high school and a cook from KRV as well as a like representative from WS's use SNAP program came to talk about the results of my survey that I did like a month ago, as well as just like the OSPI guidelines and oh, I almost forgot, there was one person, one like adult from just the community that also came. And we just talked about the results and what we can do moving forward, such as like when we come back from break, having a larger survey that can go more into depth to understand more about why students may feel a certain way about the school breakfasts and lunches, as well as trying to drum up more interest in helping the food service by connecting with like the cooking what we got at the high school.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Alexander? Thank you very much. Moving on to the first item is school building reports. And first up is Mr. Gielman, Woodstrand.
So I'm actually gonna build off of what Eric had brought up last week with Laurel, working with the thinking maps. So we did a train, train the trainer model, sent her out to get training with the thinking maps, and then she's been providing that training to our teachers. So far this year, all of our teachers have been trained except for one, and that teacher wasn't trained because she got sick on the day of the training. We just finished up the thinking map series, three of our Wednesdays, early release days. It was called writing from, right from the beginning and beyond, as setting the stage. So the teachers looked at effective writing at every grade level and then compared them vertically. So if you look at our strategic plan, we talked about aligning things vertically and horizontally within the grade level and then vertically across the grade level. So that's kind of that part. Next steps will be, she'll be offering study sessions around frame of reference, which is around the thinking maps. We just launched our math workshop structures, our look for documents. So this, this just tells you how important our instructional coach is because she's involved in all of these things, and it's a safe place for teachers to go out and make mistakes and try on new, new ideas and things we're asking them to do without it being evaluated. And provides that professional development along the way to support teachers. So we had PD this summer around math content, mainly around fractions, from adding and subtracting all the way through dividing and modeling those without procedures, which if you ever have that experience, it will play with your brain. It's very deep thinking. But anytime we have that PD, we try to follow that up with some coaching along the way so that we're providing the supports to get that implemented. The look for documents come from our math workshop book that we read last year, and it's a look force for the different structures in a math lesson. For the first time at Woodstrand, we gave a student survey to, we gave the survey to students and we're asking for their feedback on instruction and math. First time ever. I have an example, if you want to look at it. I can pass those out. I don't need to talk about it, but you kind of see what they're answering. This, this particular one is grades intermediate, three, five. Then there'll be a primary one, so every student will be able to to respond to the survey, and then we'll take that feedback and then dial in where we need to address based on what our students think. Last thing here is we've had our highest number of kids passing the second grade fluency since I've been there, and the lowest of reds in our dyslexia screener. Professionally, this is the book that I'm going to be reading over Christmas break, building to impact, how to take a instructional strategy and take it all the way through so that it has a lasting impact. I have extra copies. If you'd like, just reach out to me. I can get you a copy. We're launching this book study as, as a building, which is Common Formative Assessments 2.0. So it's taking our work that we've been doing with visible learning, with instructional or targets and success criteria, and now digging into what kind of, how do we create assessments to determine if our kids know our expectations with those targets and success criteria.
Is it?
Well, they told me I only had three minutes, but the clock wasn't going, so I tried to go as fast as I could.
No, I appreciate any questions for Kevin.
What's, what are some of the sample questions to kids regarding their math?
So there are ten. I, I had more, but I, I tried to limit it to ten. So one of them would be my teacher provides time for me to collaborate with peers. So all the way to my teacher asks questions to determine my understanding of a concept. Some of these things I had to explain to them a little bit, but to help me clarify, clarify my thinking or and, and/or encourage me to elaborate. That would be, that was question one and then question two.
Were you surprised by some of the responses or like what is your take on the responses?
Um, so far the responses have been pretty positive, but there are some areas, I haven't finished all the classes yet. But there are some areas that, well, I'll tell you one. I received time to reflect on the success criteria in my learning. So giving them time to think about the concept that they're working on, the strategies they are using, and did I, was I successful with the learning today? So that's one area. So far what we gathered, that would be one area. I think we're gonna explore more.
I think that is, yeah. How the kids kind of think about their work and their learning, especially that last question, was I think that's a whole.
Well, it comes from visible learning, and what we're trying, our end goal is that we have assessment capable learners. Because if that learning is in the student's hands, that's when we're gonna have more success.
And it leaves them to think about their learning too.
Hmm?
It leaves them to think about like their.
Yeah. What, what strategy was I successful with? Was there another strategy that I struggled with? Asking questions is part of that. I mean, knowing what to ask is part of that. And so the more that we can communicate to the student about what they're learning, why they're learning it, the better they'll be able to answer some of these questions.
I would, I would take a copy.
Get one right now. Perfect.
Okay.
Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it. Next up is Jackson Hock, athletic director. I hope I didn't take one of your talking points with my question. Or you feel free to repeat it if you need to, so.
Right. Um, okay. Well, I usually have a notebook, but today I left it at home, so we're gonna have to go with my notes here. So we just finished up winter one sports. Well, we're almost finished up winter one sports for middle school. We do have a home game tomorrow for boys basketball, and then we also have our girls wrestling tournament at Grandview on Saturday. And then winter two sports start on January sixth, two thousand twenty-five, when we get back from school. But just a little numbers from this past winter one sports. We have boys basketball had five teams with sixty students. We had girls wrestling, one team with fifteen students. And we had our dance, our girls dancing with one team with thirteen girls students on it as well. Now jumping over to the Foster High School. Winter sports are in full swing right now. We have cheer, a cheer team with one team of eighteen students. Boys basketball, we have three teams with twenty-nine students. Girls basketball, three teams with twenty-seven students. Boys swim team, one team with sixteen students. Boys wrestling, two teams, thirty-two students. And a girls wrestling team with two teams and thirty-six students as well. Here's one of our girl wrestlers now. And then just kind of a breakdown of what's happened over winter break. Girls and boys basketball programs, varsity only, will be going to Arizona for their tournament. They're playing three games there. We also have a JV basketball tournament and a C-team basketball tournament for the girls and boys programs that we played at Sunnyside High School. And then our first home game, we have one home game during winter break, which is that Friday, that is January third versus Topinish. And then our boys swim team, like she said, they're going to Pullman tomorrow, I mean, on Friday. And then boys wrestling has tournaments in Pasco, Hanford, Sunnyside, and Kent. And then our girls wrestling program has some tournaments in Pasco, Hanford, Sunnyside, and possibly Kent as well. And that's kind of what's been happening in winter sports.
I think Jackson, any questions?
What happened at the high school, the auxiliary gym?
Yesterday. Yesterday we had a leak on our roof. Last year we had a leak. It was, it was towards the back end of the oxygen, kind of towards that hill going up the side of the hill, and it was more towards the door. So it wasn't on the court. We didn't have to cancel anything, but then yesterday about ten AM, Alice came to me and said, we had a leak, and I said, all right, how bad? It's not that bad. I said, okay, we'll be good then. And then an hour goes by, it's not good. So I called, I called Andy up and I said, we need, we need to get someone out here as soon as possible. So Andy did get somebody to come out yesterday, but he said, there's no way we're gonna be able to play games. And so thankfully, our teams were away yesterday from middle school. And so we had enough space to kind of shift things around and talk to the other AD. He said, that's totally fine and much rather play at the middle school than reschedule everything. So we got it all worked out and I went into the gym today and everything's good to go. So we should be ready to roll versus Ellensburg on Friday. Unless it rains.
Great, thanks, Jackson. Any other questions? Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, Jackson.
You.
Yoshimi, do you have a report?
I do have a couple of things. So ASB has been helping with Merry Mustang Week. We're doing, so we're doing eggnog, dirty lunch tomorrow like we usually do, and I'm late because of wrestling practice. And I think that's pretty much all ASB is doing right now. We're kind of just waiting for Wish Week to come up, and then we'll probably start ramping up activities. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to review of policy and procedure four one or six one one four gifts and donations. This is coming back after last week.
So you said quite a bit of discussion last week about this, and I think there's been some changes based on that discussion. And so it's still just in the discussion items versus action. So if you've had a chance to look at it, see if there's anything else we would like to, any changes or additions, deletions we'd like to do before we move forward, move in for an action item at a future meeting. Procedure actually probably has the most rights.
Yeah, I was noticing the gifts from alcohol producers that it talks about verification of the recipient being twenty-one years or older. Might just be me, but I think I'd prefer to see that those gifts are only even present at events that are for adults. So like if there is an auction that is family, that, that they not be there at all.
Okay.
I don't know if that's just me, but.
You mean, like not sold at all or like?
Like, like a wine basket, right? Should it be out for display, even if it's empty bottles?
Like at a student event, like if we were having a band night and they were doing silent auction, we wouldn't have wine items out at the band night. But if we had a some benefit dinner that was only adults, then the items even without the wine would be okay for you. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Would you be opposed to having gift certificates at those?
I didn't think about that. I left really conflicted, honestly, after last week, and Alexander's comments really got me thinking just about the mixed message that sends our students when we don't, you know, we shouldn't be doing these things. But you know what? It's, it is okay for an adult, right? So that's where I thought. I guess if it's at an adult event, I'm okay with it, but I don't know that it sends the right message at events where students are there.
And to be honest, I'm not sure how many adults-only events schools conduct. Because the stuff we do is normally for or for kids or with kids, even if it's for kids or usually kids. You know, they're helping run things or, you know, serving the breakfast or whatever it is.
And it's hard, it's really hard for me because I know those are the items that make money. But we want to make money for our kids. But I'm really conflicted about the message. Personally, I don't know how to resolve that.
So in the past, I know that like when band is doing fundraising and stuff, we're allowed to accept donations, we're allowed to ask for donations from Yakima Chief Hops, not like, not anything with the like any alcohol in the title though. So if we were to do like Mercer Binaries, that Norris wouldn't really want us to do something like that. I'm just speaking from my own experience, but if we were to do Mercer Estates, then that'd be chill. So, um, that's something to think about.
Isn't it Mercer Estates Winery?
I think that's always a gray, yeah, gray area with because you could do Vermont State Estates, but we all know what estates do in our area. It's typically a winery, but that's interesting about the hops, because that's again, kind of a gray area too, because we all know what hops turn into, so. It, yeah, it's a it's a tough one.
And the reason it's a tough one is just because of this. It's kind of that struggle of conscience of what's better, what's best. And when you're a public school, you know, there was a battle for years and years over having the wine and food fair at the stadium. And with the goal always being that it wouldn't be there eventually, which obviously it's not now, but you know, we can afford however the board sees fit. I just, I know, and it may be something we still want to think about a little bit longer.
Well, I'm just new to the discussion, but I did listen to last week's meeting. And yeah, it, I'm, I'm a little conflicted because you got the, you know, the cannabis thing, they could, what would keep them from advertising the same way, you know, they're the same.
So limited to alcohol.
Yeah.
Well, that was my other thought too. I mean, so I think that the one that talks about sponsorships is pretty clear that there's no sponsorships, right? But when it comes to gifts, I was thinking that too, Frank, like, well, how can you say alcohol gift certificate is fine, but not a cannabis gift certificate or tobacco, right? These are all controlled substances that are okay for adults. So how can you say we're just alcohol? So then I felt myself thinking like, well, it's just easier to say no to everything.
Yeah, and it's tough because we have so many really good wineries that are, you know, they're legit businesses and you don't want to, you know, make them demonize them and it's, and we, you know, we could use the support of everybody in our local community. So I, I am conflicted on it.
I think the other school districts, I think I'd like more information.
Okay.
The other, what, how they handle that and how they're addressing it. It is, it's conflicting and it's I think I could argue it either way. We know what Yakima Chief Hops, the Pickle Grand, that we know what's happening. We know what Concord Grapes turned into juice, and we know that Carlo turned into wine. So you know, it's a, it's a workaround, but also I'm not comfortable with someone walking into any school building and being, you know, sponsored by, you know, Happy Times around the store or, you know, by APP Brewery. I don't think that's appropriate, but I also don't want to be the credit pay. But we're gonna take all your money and recognize it. I think, yeah, and it's our community that you know, we're all making money, but it's, it's a lot of support. And I would like to take like more information to see how long it takes.
We certainly can do some more research to see if districts are handling it all, or if it's just not part of their policy. I know that Kim did some, had reached out and was talking to Walawala, but I can't tell you what the outcome of that. I don't know. But we could do some of that work, and maybe just because of timing, maybe not be on the next board meeting depending, but the one after. Yeah. Just because with Kim out right now, and then people won't really be around during break. We'll come back at the next whatever meeting, so.
Okay, I do think, I do think there are still ways, even if it's not accepting contributions directly to the school, there are ways these businesses can support our students through boosters or, you know, other, other ways, right, indirectly. And that just might.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know that.
Yeah, but it's not necessarily at a, an event that our kids are attending.
But they're trying to pay themselves money for us. I mean, yeah, it's, we could be here all night. I like Deanna's idea.
I have one question for the board. You know, you mentioned having bottles and whether they're, you know, empty bottles, what if we struck that from the policy? So if you just gift certificates or coupons?
Think about that. I want to bring it back up.
But, but should that be part of like a red line in, you know, our next discussion? I mean, obviously we're all struggling with it, right? I think we figured out the sponsorship part. That's kind of cut and dried. Now it's this card. You know, if we're talking about having, you know, bottles of alcohol empty in a basket is different than having a envelope with a gift card.
If they walked into a school, they'd probably rather see it or them.
Right.
For sure. I mean, I don't know that the message, like there's no message that same message can be sent if someone puts together a basket that has empty glasses and some margarita mix, you know, that's not alcohol and, you know, it's still sending a message that this is a basket for booze. But if there's no gift card or, or alcohol in it, so I don't know. I mean, definitely a gift certificate or coupon. That's obvious. An empty bottle.
Maybe we can just add that, just put a red line through that for the next discussion.
Okay, let's get that down.
All right.
Perfect, thank you. Moving on to action item number one is the first reading of policy forty-two thirty-seven ever advertising and promotions.
It's pretty short and sweet. Very short, brief policy. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
We've seen this a couple, at least once in the session.
I would make a motion to approve the first reading of policy forty-two thirty-seven advertising and promotion.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of policy forty-two thirty-seven advertising and promotions. Yoshimi? Kami? Alexander, thumbs up. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the gear up partnership agreement between the Washington State University and Prosser School District.
And that's your name on it, Mr. Danny. Wow.
Not sure how that happened, but there it is. So this is a seven-year agreement with Europe. We talked about that last week at the last board meeting. There's three components that we as a school district are responsible for, providing college readiness, activities, and support, whether that be more challenging courses, financial aid, FAFSA training, academic support, tutoring after school, summer programs where we'll engage in monthly management team meetings, and we'll provide all the data that they need for the grant application and the continuing monitoring for that. And then Washington State University will provide the three items listed below. They'll manage the grant and the, the fiscal side of it. They'll provide activities for the school, and they will provide advising, academic, financial aid, all those other support services to our students. Starts September of two thousand twenty-five and, and continues for seven years. And so that will take that cohort through their freshman year of college or first year out of, out of high school graduation. So seven years that we agree to those, and it's similar to, yeah, I can talk about that as well, that we've made those agreements in the past, kind of a partnership to make sure that they're supported, they get what they need to be successful as a program, and we get what we need to be successful as an educational institute and support our students.
I think we gotta care about here, except for maybe a year or two for twenty
At least a hundred.
Years. Yeah, long time.
Any questions? Student reps, any questions? One move to approve the gear up partnership agreement between Washington State University and Prosser School District.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Yoshimi? Kami, Alexander, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Prosser Heights Elementary and Princess Theater MOU Disney's The Lion King Kids. This is coming back from last week.
I think there were some questions on the contract, and I think the contract had to be corrected and provided is the corrected contract for The Lion King for Heights.
I'd make a motion to approve Prosser Heights Elementary and Princess Theater memorandum of understanding Disney's Lion King Kids.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Prosser Heights Elementary and Princess Theater MOU Disney's The Lion King Kids. Yoshimi? Kami, Alexander, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next up is surplus.
Well, I guess I'm gonna keep rolling since I don't see Andy here. I, so we did, you know, we've been working really hard to clear out our surplus and not have junk lying around. But there's always things that end up being surplus. And not have junk lying around. Um, but there's always things that end up being surplus. Like we can need to replace a, a range. A handful of furniture and then those wrestling matchwoods, you never know if someone's going to take them, but they probably have enough years of. Stuff in them. I can't imagine anyone wants them, but it's possible. So.
Thank you, Yoshimi.
I'm guessing, yeah, nobody wants to wrestle.
Yeah, you can see like the grime in the like folds.
Yeah, yeah. It's good to let them go. We'll say goodbye.
Well, I'd make a mo- motion to approve the surplus sale if, if someone's willing to buy them.
Great luck if someone haul them off.
When is the sale?
Um. Because I don't think we're gonna, because it's so few items have like a. Spend a Saturday morning to see if anyone comes for the wrestling map. Or I mean, it's a small amount of furniture, so.
Alright, thank you. Um, it's been moved and seconded to approve the surplus sale. Yoshimi. Kami, Alexander, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Motion carries. Um. Moving on to vouchers. Are they getting moved next week? Yes, they are.
Yes.
Sorry. Took me a minute to find the sentence. So vouchers will be approved at the first meeting in January. Um, with that, that completes our action items for tonight. Uh, moving on to consent items, one through. Four.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, items one through four. Uh, Yoshimi, Kami, Alexander, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. That concludes uh the action items for tonight. Moving on to reports, Delise, you're up first.
Okay, have a little bit of things. Um, so I'll start off with student enrollment for December. Um, as you can see, enrollment is down. Um, we, our budget enrollment is down um about eighteen. Um, and that is due to eleven, it's going to um open doors, which we don't get funded for that. So that's not included in our budgeted amount. Um, all over, we're down um seven point five F T E. And that is due to trimester changes and schedule changes with running start. So we haven't lost any kids up there, but we're losing F T E because of, because of running start for, for December.
Can I ask a question on enrollment?
Yes.
Um, our December. And I'll, I'd probably ask this every year at the exact same time until we get there. But is December an actual, um, do we get the revenue from the actual F T Es or is it still based on budget?
Still based on budget. Yep, it won't even out. I, it's January or February, ju- end of January.
I'll get that, but. But.
It happens once a year, so it's okay if you don't remember.
Exactly.
Thank you. Any questions on enrollment?
Yeah, I'm glad you talked about the running start because I thought, why are we losing so many kids at the high school level? But it's, their bodies are still here. In the district, but they're going to run. Okay, that, that is.
Yes.
Could you explain to me what you meant about open door?
So we don't get funded for kids in open doors. We don't, we pay that completely out of pocket. So we don't get state apportionment for that F T.
Let me clarify, because the statements. We appreciate the fact that they named the open doors program, the same thing as our gifted program. One of the reasons we've talked about changing the name of our gifted program. Open Doors is a uh, is a dropout recovery program, basically. Students that are either going to drop out.
Why are we not getting funding?
Yeah, no, we did. Well, honestly, we get very little funding for gifted as well, like seventy-four thousand dollars, but um. But no, this is for students that are either have dropped out and are trying to get back, or kids that are on the verge of dropping out because they're so credit deficient. And so they go into uh either graduation alliance. We also have a agreement with C B C, although not many of our students do that program. And it basically, it's a flow through. The money comes, but we just give it away because they're the ones teaching and managing instruments. So. I can understand your confusion. They didn't ask us first before they named the program. They probably should have, but they did not.
So if you look at the table, um, at one of the tables, it has open doors down there and that's fourteen eighteen in the graph. Um, and we call it fourteen eighteen to not, not confuse it with open door. But you can see that it jumped from fifty-three to sixty-two in the month of December. So we lost funding for, for those kiddos. Any other questions on enrollment?
Just curious on the, the kids that were losing to running start. Um, I mean, I know we got a ton of stuff that's offered through the high school. I mean, do we know?
So there's a couple of things that happen. Um, it's not necessarily losing them. It may have been in their schedule all along. Like they knew they had three, three, like they're trying to get whatever credits they needed at the high school done in that first try. And they're going to take more classes at C B C for their second or second and third try. Um, it could be a matter of courses that we don't offer, especially if your students who might be interested in like a medical field or something, so they have to go. To C B C to take some of those courses and some have to be there on campus. So it, it isn't necessarily like, oh, I'm just going to go. It's probably for most of them was planned.
Okay.
They didn't take as many courses in the first part of the year, so.
And if they're on, especially seniors, if they're on track for graduation and have all their cred, have, have all the credits they could have earned so far. They, they don't need to be at the high school a lot. They could choose to go to W A C, mostly C B C.
Yeah, and I knew you had, um, I'm getting off topic, so sorry.
It's okay.
But uh, I know you talked, I think it was over the summer that we're really close to getting a partial. A A type of degree.
They can do the whole thing there.
They can do the whole thing here.
Even if they do the whole thing there, they still do have to have thirty credits from C B C.
Right.
So they could take those online if they, like say, for instance, if they're going to be a nurse, they're going to have to go on campus and take biology in a lab. But um, no, they, they can actually, and it really, it'd be very difficult. It's for maybe juniors, but for sure seniors to, to do that at this point. But those kids starting as freshmen and sophomore, taking college and high school courses, for sure. So the sixty of those credits can be through the high school and then the other. Thirty have to be through. Mostly C B C.
And I will say, as a ring start student, um, I've done. At least like five college and high school craigs, but I've still had to take a lot of courses at one time, like last trimester had seven classes. So like you still have to like work really hard, even if you're doing. Three like ring start classes and then you're doing two college and high school classes, so, yeah.
And remember, we can get up to one point four. For running start kids, so kids can take a full load at C B C and still take some classes at the high school. We do get some apportion for, apportionment for that. Cause we do get up to one point four for those kids, not just the one that we get for that, the average student.
Thank you. Any other questions on enrollment? Sorry, Delise.
No, it's okay. Not a problem. Okay, so I will move on to our monthly financials. Um, I'm sure you've had a chance to review these already. Um, September is notoriously a terrible month for us. Um, the expenses are just astronomical. Um, with insurance going up thirty-six percent this year. It made October for a really bad month also. Um, we, I know we've talked about our cash flow, um, and it's not having the revenue we should at this point. Um, so because of that, we are operating at a two point six eight fund balance right now, which is below. Uh, what our policy, what our policy says. Um, it will go back up in, in the early of the year, about February, when we get all of our apportionment evened out. Um, but right now we're, we're operating below our policy. Um, so Deanna and Kim and I have spoken, we'll uh declare a financial emergency and we'll have that document ready for you at the beginning of January. At the January board meeting, the first.
How is our cash? How was our cash in September?
Um.
Cause it looked pretty skinny in.
It, yeah, it was skinny, um, but we did some finagling and pushed some stuff out and paid some stuff in August. Instead of pushing it to September and vice versa. Um, I think another big thing of this too is that we got two big curriculum bills that we. You know, weren't expecting. We discussed those, um, because stuff shipped out. Um, and so the, you know, those were expenses that should have been paid during the spring that unfortunately we had to pay in September. Um, so it's just. Bad, bad timing for, for a lot of things, actually. But I, I am um positive that it'll get better.
Thank you. Questions for Delise on financials? That it? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
So um, I'll be short and sweet because I, I don't have a lot to report, but since last week we're here, except. We do have some um things hap- a little fun events happening on Friday, nine fifteen at Carabee is their yearly traditional. Holiday sing-along. They do that at nine fifteen Friday and the middle school has a holiday assembly at one fifty and um they are. They have, they're collecting food for the canned food drive and it is my understanding that if they collect enough canned food. Mrs. Cole gets to put a pie in Mr. Denny's face and Mr. Denny gets to put a pie in Mrs. Cole's face. So if you have extra canned food at home, feel free to drop that off at the middle school to make sure, or like I had a nice young man come to my door last night with a wagon. We helped load him up and we're contributing to the cause. So I'm going to the assembly so I can see it. Oh, it's a done deal then. Yep. So what you're saying is you, you won? So. Is, is, is your pie in the face the grand finale of the assembly? Okay. Okay, so one fifty on Friday, if you're interested in that, and that's it for me.
I was told all about that today, by the way, and the kids are very excited. And I was also told that young man who probably came to your door collecting food is brought in a hundred some cans of food today and was the one who put everyone over.
Yeah. Yes, he was committed because not only was, uh, he didn't talk about you getting a pie in the face. He, maybe he did. He talked about his class getting a pizza party. If they top class gets a pizza party. So he was doing his job. I said, you better tell your classmates to get busy. Yes, great.
Any questions for Hannah? Great, thank you. Uh, next up is uh. I'm gonna skip over Kim's report, moving on to board reports. Shell?
Um, I don't have a whole lot, but I will give kudos to um. As you know, I coached robotics team of middle schoolers, so I had five eighth graders, four of them at Housel and one in Patterson. Who went to the regional qualifiers on Saturday and they did win first place in their. They took championship in the core values portion of the um competition and then were invited to state. So on January eighteenth, they'll be headed to Spokane to compete there. And I just also wanted to take this opportunity to plug. Those eighth graders will be ninth graders next year and are very good at robotics. So I'm. Crossing my fingers that we will have a competitive robotics team at the high school next year. I have five students who would be really great for that. That's all I've got.
Uh, not much, um, just uh thoughts and prayers with Kim and her family at this time and. Just hoping that students and staff uh have a great Christmas and get to spend some. Good time with friends and family um over the break, so. Excited for those guys. K G, thanks for the book.
Um, yeah, I don't have much. I was just gonna ask the uh, the students if you could get more feedback from the, from other students on the. Policy that we're looking at the six, sixty-one, fourteen. Um, I'd be curious to hear how the kids are, are talking about this. Um, yeah. So I'd really appreciate that. And I just wanted to say Merry Christmas and um to everybody. And uh, hope, hope the staff and everybody has a good Christmas and let's not forget the true meaning of Christmas.
Right?
I, I will fully disclose that I was not at the band concert last week. Uh, but I watched portions of it from my Paralegal Javelin video, first time it's like xenonium in the band and it was. Unbelievable. It sounded amazing. And so just congratulations to the band and incredible performance. Um. Reason I wasn't there, I had been at the North Pole, the Princess Theater um for most of October, November for the elf rehearsal. And that, we have a lot of Prosser students in that last weekend, there's this weekend a few months ago, I think there's tickets on Friday, but Saturday and Sunday. Sunday, I think there's four tickets left. Saturday, there's a full, but Friday, so Friday, that's your night to go. Um. Tickets are available, so it's a really fun show. There's a full, uh, full eighteen orchestra in it as well. Um. I did want to comment that on Monday, um, I thought, I think we'll fill this with our thoughts and encouragement for the families that were impacted by the school shooting. Conference on Monday and many different sites um provide the grim statistics. That was the three hundred and twenty-third school shooting at the United States in the year calendar year twenty-two.
Thank you, Elisa. Um, I don't have much. Um, you know, just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and. I hope the holidays are safe with family and I did want to give a plug. I've been to a few basketball games at home. And uh, you know, to Dan Norris and, and the band do a tremendous job. And I mean, the acoustics are great. They, they just do a really good job, so kudos to the band. Um, with that. Uh, our next regular board meeting will be January eighth, twenty twenty-five, not twenty twenty-four. At six P M, uh, right here, and then we'll have a safety and security meeting the same day. Um, room, at room one thirty at five P M. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.